Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission, April 13th, 2020. This is our first online web conference, so we welcome all of you. I would like to make a comment to the commissioners that traditionally we say votes to the end of the night. Tonight, we're going to vote on issues as we hear them, so we don't have to go back and try to garner up information. So we'll vote on each of the six business items as we go. I would like to start the meeting by having a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law.
Thank you. I'd like to call upon Inez St. James to read the call.
Thank you, Barbara. Town of Farmington, Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, April 13th, 2020, at the Town Hall Council chambers at 7:00 p.m. on the following applications. Tracy Smith application for special permit for expansion of home in excess of 2,400 square feet at 61 Berzai Road, R-20 Zone. Carrier Enterprises application for four-lot subdivision of 7 Coppermine Road, R-30 Zone. And Educational Play Care L T D application for special permit for expansion of special permit daycare use at 360 Colt Highway, B-1 Zone. At these hearings, interested persons may be heard and written communications received. A copy of these proposals is online at https://www.farmington CT dot org backslash departments backslash planning dash and dash zoning backslash pending dash applications, or please call the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 27th day of March, 2020, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Barbara Brennaman, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Inez. We'll move on to new business. Palazzo Drive subdivision requests for extensions of time to file final plans.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes, sir.
This is Mark DeVoe. I told Bob Palazzo he did not need to call in this evening because the matter before you is fairly basic. Because of the coronavirus, he's been a little slow in getting the last revisions done to his approved subdivision on Plainville Avenue, and because of that, he's requesting a 90-day extension, which is the statutory extension allowed to file the plans. So we would ask the commission to provide a motion to that effect, if you so wish.
We need, this is Barbara Brennaman, the Chair. We need a motion, please.
I move-
This motion would be-
Oh. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Matt. I apologize. Go ahead.
This is Matthew Pogson, and I move to approve the application for the request for extension of time.
It's specifically a 90-day extension?
Specifically a 90-day extension.
Okay, there is a motion. May I have a second?
Mike Corbola, second.
Thank you, Mike. Does everyone have any questions about this?
No.
Does everyone know what we're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I say this, and this is a first for us. If we don't hear an oppose, opposing vote, we will assume that everybody voted yes. So if you feel you need to abstain after the vote, please make it clear that you have. So it appears as though this is a unanimous vote.
We're moving on to Educational Play Care Limited sign application for 360 Colt Highway. This is Harry.
Harry, you're up, my friend. This is just for the sign.
Terrific. Good evening, everybody. My name is Harry Freeman, F-R-E-E-M-A-N, Director of Development for Educational Play Care. This item before you is a very simple item, we hope. Currently, there are two buildings located at this site. Educational Play Care operates out of one of the two buildings, and there's currently another tenant in the other building, which is a ophthalmologist. The ophthalmologist will be relocating, so we will be taking over both of the buildings, and hence, we just want to change the sign to one that identifies it clearly as an educational play care facility. It's an updated sign from what was previously there. Sign is currently externally illuminated, and we will be using the same illumination for this sign. Dimensions are the same, and it's just strictly replacing it, the sign in the same location as where it currently is.
This is Barbara Brennaman. Do the commissioners have any questions?
No.
Do you want to pick on us individually, or do you want us just to kind of speak up if we had something, Barbara?
Speak up, speak up if there's a void you can fill.
Okay. I'm curious about the duck's head-
You have to identify yourself. Please identify yourself before you speak.
I apologize, Matthew Pogson, and I have a question about the duck's head, the mother duck's head. It's sticking up above the rest of the sign, or is that actually encased with like a white outer casing? I'm just concerned about that being hit by snow or something and just taking the duck's head right off as it, you know, goes by with a plow going 40, 50 miles an hour.
Yeah, no, that duck's head does extend above the sign. It's kind of an attention grabber a little bit. If we ever do have a headless duck, we will be replacing the headless duck.
Okay. Does that stick up higher than the existing sign at all, or is that about the same?
It should be about the same.
Okay.
Yeah, the existing sign, as you can see, comes to a peak. I believe the peak is probably a little higher than our forehead.
And there's no Camelot Commons anymore? It will just be that sign?
Yeah. Currently, because we're going to be occupying the entire location, there's really no need to identify it as a professional office building.
And it'll remain with the same lighting that will come from ground lighting? Are the lights going to continue to be halogen based, or are they LED, or is there a dimmer switch attached to that at all?
It's the current lighting. I'm not exactly sure what it is, to be quite honest with you, Matt.
But it will not be changing at all?
It will not be changing, correct.
Okay. No further questions from me at this time. Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions? Hearing none. I'd like to have a motion, please.
I move to approve the Educational Play Care sign as presented, yeah, as presented. Thank you.
Please identify yourself.
I apologize, Matthew Pogson. I have to get used to that. Sorry.
I need a second, please.
Inez St. James, second.
Are there any further questions from the commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained? Is that an abstain? No. All in favor? May I hear it again, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? No, it looks like we heard it.
Okay.
Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to Bridgehampton subdivision. Accept an application for reapproval of the Bridgehampton subdivision off River Road and schedule a public hearing with a recommended public hearing date of May 11th, 2020. May I have a motion, please?
I'll just keep going. Matthew Pogson here, and I move to accept the application for the Bridgehampton subdivision, the reapproval of that.
No, what we're recommending is a public hearing, Matt.
The reapproval of the Bridgehampton subdivision off River Road and scheduling a public hearing for May 11th.
That's right. Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Inez St. James, second.
Are there any questions? Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to New Horizons Village, accept an application for reapproval of modifications of special permit and site plan approval for construction of a 22-unit congregant housing building at 36, I mean, I'm sorry, 37 Bliss Memorial Road and at R-30 Zone, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of May 11th, 2020. May I have a motion, please?
Matthew Pogson, and I will try this again. I move to accept the application for reapproval of the modification of special permit and site plan for, and schedule a public hearing for May 11th, 2020.
Inez St. James, second.
Second, please. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Does everyone know what we're voting on? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Michael Quaz, accept an application for special permit for amateur radio tower in excess of 45 feet and less than 65 feet, and an application for residential helipad at 124 Mountain Road and schedule a public hearing, recommended at May 11th, 2020. May I have a motion, please?
Matthew Pogson here again, and I make a motion to accept the special permit and amateur radio tower application and have a public hearing for, recommended for May 11th of 2020.
May I have a second, please?
Inez St. James, second.
Thank you.
And that included the helipad, too?
Yeah, we probably should go back and reread that, Matt, to make sure you include-
I'll reread the entire statement. That's fine. I'm making a motion to accept the application for special permit for amateur radio tower in excess of 45 feet and less than 65 feet, and application for residential helipad at 124 Mountain Road and schedule the public hearing for May 11th of 2020.
Thank you. May I have a second on that?
Inez St. James, second.
Does everyone understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Number six is Truffles, request for food truck service.
I added this to my report. Here it is. So Truffles is requesting the ability to, and let me just make sure that Mr. Watson is here.
I thought he, somebody checked in.
Yes, he did. Okay. No, Gil Walton, Gil Walton, thank you. So we've unmuted him. If he has specific questions for the business owner. Truffles Cafe is, does have a food truck. They are licensed with the Farmington Valley Health District. They're seeking during this pandemic to provide food truck service to Farmington neighborhoods such as Devonwood and the Highlands on a pre-planned and a temporary basis. No corporations are being targeted based on my discussions with Mr. Walton. The statements that I provided to you were vetted with Mr. Walton, yeah. Is it not? Yes.
Walton, yeah.
Yeah, and so we think that they're correct and factual. So he's asking for a temporary ability to do this as a service to the residents in the neighborhoods, to be able to place orders and pick them up at a pre-planned destination within their neighborhood. Gil, you have it? Okay, I'm just going to ask if he has anything to add to that first, Inez. Gil?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah?
Okay. No, I think you summarized it pretty well.
Okay. I'm sorry. Inez?
Yes. Yes, I guess the question I had for you, actually, Mark, thank you, is I just want to make sure I understand our regulations today, and if something changed, please correct me. My understanding is that in our town, food trucks are not allowed unless they're associated with a public event. Is that still the case?
That is still the case, and this request is born not from any desire, I think, just to circumvent the regulations, but as a, as a sort of a, yeah, means to serve the public during this coronavirus. So I was unable, obviously, to approve this myself, and we don't know where to take it because it is a special request. In essence, I think what's being requested here is that the commission understands the current situation and that they, this is the request, not that you have to approve it, but this is the request, that the commission understands the situation at hand, and I don't want to say turn a blind eye, that just doesn't sound good, but in essence, that's what it is. Like some of the signs that we're seeing out for folks that have takeout, that, you know, wouldn't normally do takeout. We're not proactively enforcing those because of this situation, but because the food truck is a little more obvious and going to be out there in neighborhoods, we felt that it should be brought to the commission. We should, all, just to let you know, and I forgot to put it in here as well, the governor of Connecticut has also, by executive order, allowed food trucks in the, all the highway rest areas where they're typically or normally prohibited. So I think there's general understanding that some of these services are, because of what's going on, perhaps needed. And there's no way that we can comfortably change the regulations in a timeframe that's going to work for Gil. So here we are. That is it in a nutshell.
I have a question. Keith Iver.
Hi, Keith.
Yes, Keith.
So I guess it's a two-part question. One is, who determines where the spot in said neighborhood is going to be? And then, I would think, we probably have to put a hard date on it if we were to allow this, because, you know, the coronavirus factors of it could be lingering for many, many, many months.
I believe the, if you look at the memorandum of the TPZ review memo, the statements that were made were that Mr. Watson will be contacting HOAs, homeowner associations, and so on and so forth, to pre-arrange where within the neighborhood these locations will be. So it'll be coordinated with the neighborhoods as opposed to just sort of him picking them himself.
Yeah, no, I do see that, and for like Devonwood, that makes a lot of sense to me. I could see a food truck parked by the gazebo at Devonwood. Something like the Highlands would be murkier because there's not necessarily the same easy gathering spot, and the Highlands is so sprawling. Just logistically, it seems like it would be a tough thing to coordinate.
So that's, perhaps is a question that's better suited to Mr. Walton.
In my, in my-
I'm sorry, we can't hear you, sir.
Background noise.
Somebody's got something going on in the background. I'm going to mute everything. Yeah, trying to, okay, sounds better. Are you there, Gil?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, perhaps try to answer that question again. We were having some technical difficulty.
Okay. Actually, my statement of Devonwood and the Highlands is just really kind of examples of my statement.
We cannot hear him.
Yeah, you're going to have to speak up, Gil.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This is, Devonwood and the Highlands were just, you know, kind of examples. I know there's many different neighborhoods in Farmington, and we would coordinate that with, you know, whoever is kind of head of the neighborhood association, or, you know, if it's a Facebook group that represents a bunch of people in the neighborhood or something like that. You know, as to a spot, that might be a good spot to go. If it doesn't work out, if that's a good spot in that neighborhood, then we just wouldn't do that next one. It would have to be, you know, someplace that was obviously, you know, not, anybody striving for anything like that, just give some, like a stack or something like that. I'm not really sure. I mean, this is something that we would do our homework, and we would discuss it with the, you know, with whoever the head of the organization was, and then we would, you know, we'll work with them to kind of set out the information. You know, for example, a couple food trucks will be at Devonwood by the gazebo on Friday between 4:00 and 7:00, or, you know, in other neighborhoods in town. We still have some research in our homework to do, you know, to get all the contact information from these groups, but it's something that's going on all over the country now, and I think it would just help, you know, it was, you know, it's kind of a nice, it's kind of like the ice cream truck showing up once in a while, and people know it's coming, and in our case, they're allowed to go online, they can order, they can just walk up to the truck, pick it up, they could walk up to the truck and order, but we would obviously, you know, maintain all the social distancing parameters that, you know, we're all outside. But this is working very successfully in a lot of areas, and the trust in Devonwood is not going to die.
Commissioners, you have some questions?
Hi, this is Inez, and I do have a, I do have a question. Is the plan to close the Farmington restaurant, or the current spot, Truffles?
No, not at all. I mean, we're open, we're, you know, we're doing the best we can in current situation. We're doing 30 to 40% of the business we normally do. It's not a great situation, obviously, but, I mean, we went off and reported for our staff, and, you know, we still maintain food trucks. We got food trucks through Harper Hospital, United Medical Center, every Thursday or Friday, had been for years. And, no, this is just, this is just us taking outside the box, maybe another way to get more sales, and then help out the community and survive the pandemic. We're not planning on looking for problems. I mean, you know, hopefully this thing will last forever. I mean, if it lasts too long, I guess, you know, lots of all businesses will be out of business, but that's not our plan. I think we've been there a long time. We can just get, get support from people coming and taking stuff up, snow, Easter catering, and things like that. So, you know, if we can, if we can make it through the mountain the other side, you know, we'll still be there.
I would, I guess, just continue with one more thing. And then, I'm sorry, I probably missed a bunch of what you had to say, and again, I apologize for that, but just my opinion on this, we are a small town. A lot of restaurants have been putting on their websites, the hours for curbside, you know, days and hours. I just, I worry about this. I don't, I'm not in favor of this request. I think people will, that's why I was asking if you were closing the current location. I think people will have the predictability of knowing where to go, and since you're going to keep your location open, post your hours on, when you're open for curbside or delivery or whatever. I'm not for the truck.
We already have all that posted. We have, we have a website, we have all of that on there. We have signs all over the building, we have Facebook pages, we have all the social media. Everybody knows what we're doing at our store right now.
Excellent.
It's an extension of what we already do.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
Other commissioners?
Matthew Pogson here. I would like to just ask, is this, it sounds to me almost like this is almost more of a delivery service, but is this a delivery service and you're actually cooking or making the stuff in the truck, or is it really just a food truck that's working as a delivery truck?
Well, our food, our food truck is the kind of truck where you, you either go online and place an order and then walk up to the truck and pick up your order, or you walk up to the truck and place the order with, you know, the person in the window, and we make the order there. It's not a delivery service. It's parking our food truck with a venue at a location where you can hook it up and get food.
Okay, thank you. That clarified that. The only other thing I would say is I'm kind of in line with Inez, but at the same time, I also think that if we were to go ahead with this, Keith makes a very good point of having a hard set date, and as of right now, I'm kind of thinking along the lines of what the governor's doing with the schools and trying to give a date of when they can reopen, and that might be a good date to follow for when this would be, when this permit would expire, would be when they allow that to open back up. That might be something. I know the central businesses, I have a feeling they're going to try to open them up slowly and expand that slowly, but if we had a hard date of something like public schools are back in, then, or it's acceptable to have groups, like having a public school open, then it might be the time for it to expire if we do decide to go ahead with it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
This is Keith. My only other concern would be-
Who's speaking, please?
This is Keith Iver. My only other concern would be, and I certainly commiserate with Truffles as far as wanting to drum up business and to be serving the community, I think that's great. My concern is, is this a set of precedence for anybody else with a food truck in town that wants to sort of hit neighborhoods? What happens when we hit a neighborhood where, you know, I understand that if we're parked in front of somebody's house and they don't want you there, that you guys would head out, but I think it could create a pretty tough precedence, and I really think that this coronavirus is going to be ongoing, you know, into the fall and around, and I just worry about not having tight enough parameters around it. It would be my concern. I love the idea, and I love supporting local businesses in town, I just, I think it's a little bit too loose as presented.
As Chair, this is Barbara Brennaman, I'd make a comment that it seems like it could be a service well serving our community, and I agree with some kind of an end date, maybe tied to the governor's release, but it could go on longer than we anticipate, and I would be interested in maybe a time period that could be extended, like have it be able to operate for 90 days and see what happens after 90 days. Do they still want to do it? They may do it for two weeks and decide it's not worth it. So it's hard to, it's hard to define what might happen in the future. My real question has to do with, you use Devonwood and the Highlands, and I can see Devonwood, which has a community association determining where and when and how you'd be allowed to enter. The Highlands has no association, like West District area doesn't have an association. So I'm not sure how you accommodate those kinds of neighborhoods for, in order to get permission to be there. And I think that almost has to be left, if this were to be approved, left to Mr. Walton's work to meet with neighborhoods to find out where they would be allowed. My question would be, do they need additional approvals from the town, or is this sufficient if this were to be voted? And I guess I'd look to Mark for that. Is this, if we were to approve something like this, there's no other application he would have to make other than to an association, neighborhood association?
That's correct. And just- And, and just to sort of round it out for everybody, you know, I do, do get a little concerned with regards to setting precedent. Uh, but if, I, I think if the commission looks at this as a sort of a, an emergency-based consideration. I mean, let's face it, you can't, you can't change the word "and" to "but" in your regulations and it takes three months. So, like, there's no way that, that anyone is going to be able to be nimble enough unless we have the wand that our governor, uh, wields to do an executive order to accommodate this kind of request. So I, I would agree with Barbara, I would say that maybe perhaps set a date, um, and, and someone did mention the governor's date. But, but I think maybe take it a step further if you're interested in doing this. And allowing for a simple extension to happen that the commission can consider based upon conditions on the ground. So if the governor is saying that, uh, as of April twentieth today, uh, that the children can return to school, and that's the last date I was aware of. Then maybe that's a date to hang your hat on, but then if you.
No, it's May twentieth.
Excuse me, May, not April, I'm sorry, I had that written right in front of me, thank you Barbara. But if you, but then if you want to perhaps say, listen, we're willing to grant a thirty day extension, um, as long as he comes in and checks with us. So that we can say, well, yeah, things are still bad, um, then maybe that's something you want to work in potential motion. Uh, and again, these are just, this is food for thought.
This is Matthew Pogson. Matthew Pogson here.
Yep.
Listening to everybody, I, I actually was kind of thinking it was going to be something I'd be more in favor of and I'm actually leaning towards, um, maybe not. And the reason for that is the, um, the thought of, I actually started thinking about the Farmington, uh, farm truck, which is something that has been able to go around. But they've also been going places that they don't necessarily have designated on their stops. And they were supposed to be stopping only where they had, uh, been approved to stop. And we have recently been told by Town Hall that we don't have a very strong zoning enforcement currently. Um, it might be something that would be, uh, difficult to enforce and I don't really want it to become rampant. Um, so I'm just going to say if we were to do it, um, I think putting that date on it, like you were just saying a minute ago, is very important. But even maybe pulling it back from what Barbara even suggested and going to a thirty day or a forty-five day or something like that. Um, because I just don't know if we're going to be able to really regulate it. And then who knows if other people are going to just see it and then they're going to start just doing it because they think they can because they see somebody else doing it. So it's going to be a difficult zoning enforcement, uh, issue, um, that's all.
Anyone else?
Well, this is Marcy Schwartz and, um, I'm actually in support of it and it seems like not such a, uh, I don't think it's a precedent given the fact that, uh, this whole virus is not a precedent. And as long as it has an end date, um, I think we should allow businesses to do what they can and allow the community to take advantage of, uh, opportunities for making their lives a little easier and helping out, so just my opinion.
Marcy, this is Barbara, um, how do you feel about an end date? What are you thinking?
Uh, no, I think I like the idea of an end date, I think it makes sense. And I think it needs to be, in my mind, tied to when people are backing out. So maybe that's when, I, I'm a little afraid of the school reopening because nobody's going to talk about that from the end of June until September. And who knows when exactly that's going to end. But when businesses start to reopen and people can go into stores, um, but if you want to do it on a three month, um, check in, that's fine with me as well.
No, I would do thirty days renewal, sixty days renewal, ninety days, it doesn't matter to me, it's just that I think there needs to be a window that we need.
Thirty day renewal.
I mean, we do have, we do have a farm truck in town that moves across town and serves the community well, people rave about it. Um, and, and that's only done, it, it's seasonal. Um, so, you know, it, it might be interesting from a plan and zoning perspective to do something like this for sixty days and see how it goes. And perhaps depending upon complaints or compliments, know that we might be thinking about it in our regulations. So that certain times of the year, things could happen. Um, and yet there are, there are parts of it, I don't, I'm concerned about neighborhoods feeling like they're being invaded. So you don't want that feeling to go out into our neighborhoods, our neighborhoods are residential. So it's, it's a, um, challenge, this one's a challenge. Anyone else on the commission?
Mike Grabulis.
Yeah, Mike.
I just want to say, I am in favor of this, we've done a lot of other things as a community to change the, the ways that we've done things for years. Um, to make accommodations this time, and I, I see this as, as nothing different than that. Um, you know, as you've seen through the, the governor's executive orders, he's made a lot of changes that you never would have thought we ever would have seen. Um, for, for restaurant accommodations and various other businesses. Um, we're not asking to change our, our regulations, um, we're simply asking for a temporary, um, temporary request to, uh, make it easier on a business. And, uh, I do support it and I do support it with a, um, with a thirty, forty-five day, uh, acceptance with a renewal possibility after that.
Okay, thank you, Mike, anyone else? In order to go forward with this, I need a motion?
I'd like to make the motion, Barbara, this is Matt Pogson.
Okay.
I think I'd like to make a motion that the application be approved for a period of sixty days. With the understanding that if the governor releases restaurants and allows them to reopen before that, that the permit would expire at that time. After sixty days, the applicant, if the, um, order that restaurants must be closed is still in effect, then the applicant must come back to us and, uh, re-present their, uh, application.
We have a motion, is there a second, please?
Mike Grabulis, second.
There comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Inez St. James.
Abstain? Okay, so it is five to one?
No, I think, oh, because we didn't see it, yes.
Five to one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, motion will carry, thank you. We'll move on to public hearings. First public hearing will be Carrier Holdings.
Can I just bring two people up here?
Application for four lot re-subdivision of Seven Copper Mine Road in our thirty zone.
Brian's already up. Okay, Brian, show's yours.
Thank you very much, Mark. Uh, for the record, Brian Panico, Harry Colonsun, eight seventy-six South Main Street in Plansville, Connecticut. Uh, here on behalf of Carrier Holdings LLC. Um, the existing property, um, okay, that Seven Copper Mine Road is three point one six acres. It's a R thirty zone, uh, the majority of the site currently is grassed area with scattered trees, um, and the, uh, with a wooded perimeter. Um, this parcel has frontage on Copper Mine Road, which is to the north. Um, it also has two curb cuts and a horseshoe-shaped driveway. Um, it's abutted by residential properties to the south and to the west. Uh, and then it's abutted by the, it abuts the Farmington Trail to the east. Um, and beyond that, uh, the parking area for the Farmington Trail and New Bern Avenue. Um, topographically, the site slopes, uh, generally from the west, uh, from the residential areas down to the east. Um, that water goes, uh, to the trail and either flows over the trail or, uh, into, uh, drainage trail that runs along the side of the trail and directs water eventually into the New Bern Avenue drainage system. Um, the proposed application is to subdivide this piece of property with, which has an existing house and an existing garage on it, uh, to a four lot subdivision. Um, once again, this is an R thirty zone, uh, all these lots will maintain, uh, all the requirements of the R thirty zone. They're all at least thirty thousand square feet, if not larger. Uh, we've also provided conservation easements, um, over lots two, three, and four. Um, those conservation easements, uh, make up a total of about sixteen percent of the total parcel area, so well over the required, uh, minimum. Um, there, we are proposing new private sanitary and water mains in the private, this will be a private road. Uh, that road's name is going to be Dominique's Court, uh, so I'll be referring to it as that from this point forward. Um, as far as the stormwater management goes and dealing with the stormwater for Dominique's Court and the rest of these, uh, new proposed houses, as that was a concern, uh, be given the proximity to the trail, uh, all of the houses themselves will be sized so that all the, so that the roof leaders will go into underground infiltration units, uh, reducing the size of the basin as much as we can by storing that water underground. Um, we also are using LID strategies, so this road will be curbed to a certain point, um, along, which was along the basin, uh, toward the north end of the road. Uh, there's a pre-treatment filter strip along the road where the water, where there's not going to be any curve. So the water from the road will drain down to that point, enter that pre-treatment filter strip. We have some riprap for, uh, final decision on the materials, it'll either be like a riprap, riprap material or like a river rock, depending on, uh, what ends up, uh, preferable to the developer. Uh, water will then trickle down into the basin itself and, uh, that is proposed as being a dry detention basin. Uh, and to maintain that, as we've designed it, uh, we've also designed it with a curtain drain, uh, type of setup in the bottom of it. So that any water that does remain standing, uh, in the basin after a really heavy rain, um, that curtain drain will promote, you know, the infiltration of that water even quick, even more quickly than just dealing with regular groundwater recharge, uh, to keep that area dry. Um, once again, we are meeting all the town standards as far as the, um, stormwater management goes. We have designed this to meet, um, all the requirements of the R thirty zone. Uh, and we believe that this is, uh, that the presentation before you is the best use of this, um, of this land. Uh, if there's any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Patrick, did you raise your hand?
Uh, yes, I did, uh, this is Patrick Carey, I tried to recuse, at what point do I recuse myself from this application?
You can do that right now.
You can do it right now.
Okay, I tried to do it before and I, something, I think I was muted on the computer, but yes, I do recuse myself.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Patrick can lower his hand now? Oh, we can, okay. All right, we'll go to the commissioners now. Who? Let's go to the commissioners, will you have questions on the application? Please identify yourself before you speak. Nobody, has any questions, come on, somebody has questions.
So, this is Marcy Schwartz and I, I'm, um, curious if there are any sidewalks planned in this little cul-de-sac.
Uh, no, there are no sidewalks, uh, Brian Panico for Carrier Holdings, um, there are no sidewalks being proposed as a subprime room.
Okay, I guess I would mention that I just don't like the idea of streets without sidewalks.
Thank you, Marcy, anybody else?
Hi, it's Inez St. James, um, is there a buff, will there be a buffer, um, on the east side where the trail runs?
So there isn't, there is some existing, uh, tree line, um, we are proposing to clear pretty much up to the property line to, uh, get the grading and everything in for the basin. Um, there are some existing trees, there is a split rail fence, uh, in that location of the trail. Um, but as far as any additional visual buffer, uh, we haven't proposed any.
I, I use, I personally use that trail, um, just about every day and, uh, just thinking about, you know, anyone purchasing these properties. That trail gets a lot of traffic. I hope, um, we can put additional, uh, plantings, I think a fence would probably be just ugly, that's just my opinion. Um, uh, so you're bringing water, um, what is the impact? I saw, uh, I think in the engineering comments that you may be, uh, well, there's ledge and I think, uh, one of the neighbors wrote in also with comments. Um, what is the impact to all the homes that have wells in that neighborhood?
Uh, so we are bringing in, um, public water. So as far as, uh, um, capacity-wise goes and, you know, these homes put it, you know, taking groundwater and putting strain on other wells, that shouldn't be the case. Um, and as far as the ledge is concerned, we did do some test pits, uh, both along the road, the centerline of the road, uh, and in the area of the detention basin, what we found, uh, and you can see the soil test data kind of in this presentation slide there. What we did find was that there was a fracturable ledge down about twenty-four to thirty inches. Um, and this was something that, when I was out there with the developer, when we were doing these test pits, he'd encountered, um, before. Uh, in the, in the, I don't know if it was necessarily in this area, but, uh, generally this type of fracturable ledge. Um, and it was something that he felt pretty comfortable with being that the usually breaks up, you can usually get down another three or four feet without an issue. This is not something we're planning on, uh, blasting or doing any of that kind of stuff for. Um, this is the material, he was very confident, um, would be something he could get through and we would be able to, uh, get water main and sanitary main in basements and everything like that and without a problem. So there should be very, very little impact to any neighboring properties in the, um, there should be no impact to neighboring wells, uh, as, once again, the water supply is going to be public water. Um, and I don't believe there would be any other, um, negative impacts to, to neighbors at all.
Would you, uh, so since the water's coming in and you're abutting the trail, uh, would you consider bringing in water or water fountain, uh, to put on the trail for the residents?
Um, I, we could, I can talk to the developer about that, um, and I could see if that would be something he might consider.
Okay, I, for me personally, go ahead.
There is, there is existing water main in Copper Mine Road. So just to make sure that I'm being clear, we are just tapping into the existing water main on Copper Mine Road. It's not like we're bringing water up from New Bern Ave, I just wanted to make sure that, that was clear as well.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and, um, if I may add this as well, I know that there was another request for some, um, additional work that the developer did agree to, which was to kind of clean up the site, uh, site distances were a question in our initial, um, sit-down meetings with town staff. And as we went through and started looking at site distances, there were some concern about some of the, um, brush and some of the, uh, low trees and stuff like that. Uh, actually on the north side of Copper Mine Road, um, where the trail meets Copper Mine. And the developer did, um, agree to kind of clean out some of that as well to provide better visibility for people crossing the trail, um, to traffic on Copper Mine, so.
Um, thank you for, uh, letting us know that. I, I just think, um, you know, like I said to you, I'm very familiar with the part of town, uh, it's a beautiful neighborhood, there are a lot of trees. Um, it just, based on these plants, it looks like we're squeezing in a house everywhere we can fit it. Um, but I also recognize that it's a, you know, private property, uh, just because we can doesn't mean we should. Um, I wish there were less houses on this parcel, that's my opinion. And, and, um, I would love to see some kind of buffer by the bike path with more plantings and, uh, a water fountain will be awesome, thank you.
Okay, and I will definitely talk to the developer and, um, see what we can do about adding some additional plantings and I'll, I'll talk to him about a fountain as well.
Thank you.
Another commissioner?
This is, this is Keith Viber, I, I have a question on the east side of the development for the, the neighbor there. So for years, I think they've, um, So, for years, I think they've, per their letter, been under the assumption that they would never have more than one neighbor to the west, and it's a fairly private lot that they're on. I'm just wondering if you guys have thought of doing anything to provide them any privacy from this development, so that they're not just staring, you know, at, at a new developments, you know, people's back decks and things like that.
And you're talking about the property to the east of, or the, to the west of this, of this development?
Must be to the west.
So, to the west, we do have, that is the, there is a conservation easement, so the tree clearing and cutting will be relatively, will, will leave a buffer of existing trees there, and as far as the, the homes go, the existing garage and existing house that are there now are actually the only, are the two that will be the closest and would have the most impact to that property as well.
Sure.
I think actually, if you look at lot three, for that property owner, I think it's a garage or something that's sitting there, or it, it mostly, the, that's actually the thickest area, I guess I should say, of the, the tree clearing. I know that it's not the developers' intent to clear this lot completely, and we've tried to save as many trees as, as we could, and still maintain proper grading and all the utilities and, and everything like that as well.
Barbara?
Yes.
This is John Bibber, how are you?
I'm well. Do you have a question, John?
Uh, no, I'm just letting you know that I've now got audio, I can.
Thank you.
I wasn't able to talk before.
We were missing you.
I was trying.
Any other commissioner with questions, comments?
Matthew Pogson here.
Yes, Matt.
I know that there's a conservation easement, and the drawing that we're looking at currently on our screen shows greenery around the outside edge. That greenery is not the conservation easement, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. That's the proposed tree line, however, the conservation easement, and I don't know if Mark, if this is a, one of those good such possibility to go to maybe the SD one sheet, where it actually shows the.
Yeah, I know that the conservation easement goes behind that existing house to help to buffer the neighbor. I was just, go ahead, I'll wait till you get, if you get there.
But to answer your question, that is correct. That is not necessarily the exact limits of the conservation easement as shown. It does follow, that, that tree line does follow the conservation easement in a good portion behind lot two and lot three.
Now, that, that's actually a different map than what we were sent. Did they change that in the last week, the conservation?
Yes, it could have been, because this would have terminated right about here at a very narrow point.
Right, exactly, and now it seems to be a wider piece.
Correct.
That's good, that, I wanted to see if, I, I feel as if it would be prudent to extend that out to where the green area was shown in that last picture, to show that the neighbor has a clear buffer that will be undisturbed during the, yes, in that picture, exactly. I'm glad to see that it was thickened at least, and not going down to that taper, to that corner pin. Is it, would it be considered something that, at least, I mean, you'd have to bring it back to the developer, obviously, but has there been discussion at all about extending that out towards the road to maintain a clear buffer between the neighbor with a conservation easement?
Um, I'm not sure if I understand, you mean just making it larger in general behind lot two, or, or?
Carrying it through from lot two into lot one, bringing that up almost to Coppermine Road to ensure that there was a clear buffer between the existing property line, but property lines in general.
Yeah, I will definitely, I can definitely bring that up to the developer. I don't think that that would necessarily be a problem. Like I said, it wasn't his intention to like clear cut, you know, from property line to property line. He was planning on saving trees, so I think that that would be something he might, he would be open to.
The same concept would be nice if they were to do something along the backside of the retaining pond and the, along the trail. As Inez had specifically pointed out, that area is well-known as being a green area, and if there's nothing to stop the developer from clearing it, that there's a good possibility that they might just carry through. I mean, you can see that there are trees on the town property as well, which help to give some barrier, but it would be nice to have some insurance that along that, that line there, there was a definitive area that was not being cleared, and that could remain as a conservation easement. I don't know how the other commissioners feel about that, but besides that, and the fact that this is a neighborhood that's right alongside the trail where they probably do want a sidewalk, those are my two major concerns about this development. Other than that, everything falls within, you know, it's an R thirty, they're all thirty thousand square foot lots, so I really don't have any other concerns other than those two things. I guess we can bring that up during discussion and go from there. Actually, Matthew Pogson's still here. I just wanted to ask Mark, were there any other concerns that you had? Because I know that the engineering report was not perfect when it got sent to us to review. Were any of the other issues addressed that needed to be addressed? Mark?
Based on this plan, I believe that most of the issues have been addressed. There's, there are, there are still, and there always seem to be a few lingering ones, that we work out with the applicant before the maps are filed. And that's, I think, in the time that I've been here, typically the case. I think the most important one was that the applicant was going to be requesting a waiver for road width, and they are no longer doing that. The road width is as, in accordance with your regulations, they do not require a, a waiver. Also, you'd mentioned sidewalks, this is a private road, so sidewalks are not required, and I agree, they would be nice, however your regulations don't require them. With regards to the open space, Matt, and you seem to be interested in this, the, the complement of open space that's required has been set aside. It sounds as though what you're looking to do is perhaps see it a little, reapportion it a little bit. I, I think the way that the developers set the subdivision up, it's going to be difficult to provide a lot of open space on this property along the trail. I, I don't know what, what more I can, I can give you. Was there anything, any more than that? Okay.
Other commissioners? My, my, this is Barbara Brenneman. My question, will this community have an association that it's a private road?
Uh, yes, I believe so, that this would be a homeowners' association, and there would be a variety of different rules and regulations as far as what they need to do for maintaining the road and maintaining the detention basin and things of that nature, so, and that's where I think that it, we can put other things in as far as the commission's concerned about tree clearing and, and making sure that people are staying within the conservation easements and stuff like that as well. But yes, this will be a homeowners' association.
Okay.
Brian, may I?
Uh, this is Barbara Brenneman. Our planner has a question.
Brian, thank you, Brian Mark D'Voe. One of the questions that I had was, and I may have jumped the gun on the road width, we just received this plan today, does it indeed address the fact that the road width is now twenty feet as opposed to eighteen, or does this still show the eighteen-foot road width?
This, this plan still currently shows an eighteen-foot road width, but I know that that was something that we had, that we had already talked about, and we were in the process of kind of going through and, and making corrections. We just don't, we just didn't have a, a chance to make all of the corrections, the comments.
So, that, that's something of a concern for, for staff, because it, it can move things around in the subdivision. I know it's, it's only one foot each side or two feet on one side, but it can, it can move things around considerably, so it, you know, it would probably be my recommendation that the public hearing remain open, unless you have some form of, of a solution that you can offer this evening, you know, to.
No, no, and we agree, and I had, I had had a conversation with Bruce Seer about this earlier, or late last week, and what we wanted to do, we are aware that we do still have to make some of these changes and, and widen the road and reconfigure lot lines to show how that's going to work with adding the additional two, two feet to one side or one foot to each side of the road, but we want, we wanted to still get some input from the commission early on here before we made those changes, so that we could try to incorporate as many changes as possible.
Awesome, and, and in that way, you'll be able to take some of these recommendations into consideration as you come, come back.
Correct, and we can show them at the next meeting, and, and at that point, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Mark, Matt Pogson here. I wanted to know, you made a statement about the sidewalks, and it seems as if a few of the commissioners have an interest in having them, although they are not a requirement per se, is that something that we could require, or is it something that is not spelt out for the subdivision regulations, and that therefore doesn't give us any jurisdiction to make that requirement?
If, that's a good question. If this were, for instance, a special permit, like for an open space subdivision, you would then have the ability to apply conditions and add additional, you know, you know, say, you know, given, given the, you know, given the nature of the subdivision, I believe it needs sidewalks. Because it's a straight subdivision, all it has to do, like a site plan, all it has to do is meet your regulations, and you technically have to approve it. So, the answer, you, you can ask, and sometimes.
Ask for anything you want.
Yeah, sometimes asking nicely is a perfect way to, you know, make someone think about it and scratch their head and say, yeah, if I were living there, I'd like some sidewalks too.
Yeah.
But, you know, in this case, he has the ability to say no, but if it's some, you, you can ask for anything you want. I think your chairperson just summed that up perfectly.
Yep.
I would only say that in that circumstance, we may have a discussion about this, obviously, and Barbara will determine all that. I, I do request, just, just putting it out there, that it would be nice to see maybe some of the greenery taken out, the conservation easement taken out from the third parcel and redistributed to the first, to try to give that neighbor a little bit more privacy, just to ensure that they feel as if, you know, we've tried our best to give them something they've enjoyed over all these years, and that might be taken away. So, that's all, and I'm gonna mute myself back to, you know, submission here.
I, I do know, are there other commissioners that want to ask questions? Hearing that, I would move to the fact that this is a public hearing, so if there are people in attendance that would like to speak, either in favor or in opposition to this application, you may check in now and be heard.
There is a feature where you should be able to raise your hands, so for those of you wishing to speak, I see one attendee. All right, you should be able to speak, sir. I believe it's a sir.
Yes, it is. It's Rusty Malik, fifteen Coppermine Road. So, a few observations, it was originally, the, one of the opening comments was that, that most of the site is open, and the reality is the whole, the most of the site is wooded, and about the only open space is probably smaller than that detention pond that's shown on the map. So, I'm, I'm really concerned that we're taking a really heavily wooded area, we're opening it right up, cutting out quite a few trees in this area to, to put four homes in there. The site is a very awkward triangular site with these, you can see by the lots, they're really, you know, narrow at some points, and obviously, they're trying to maximize the utilization of this, this site. But I, I'd say three homes here would work well, but putting, you know, jamming four homes in here is, is a little bit much. I am concerned about ledge, and we have wells, and the impact potentially, if, if there has to be any blasting, then we would want to be notified about that, I'm sure there is regulations to that effect.
Yes, there are.
And, so, another question I had is when, when we discuss thirty thousand square feet, does that include this road that's being proposed, the cul-de-sac and the road? Is that part of the thirty thousand square feet of, of each of these properties?
Well, it's not.
So, that's outside of the thirty thousand, okay. And then, the comment made earlier on, lot one, right now, you know, we're right across, we're on the west side, and it's all wooded there, so we are going to, we do see a small garage, but that's, you know, that's pretty far from, from our property, and, you know, all of a sudden, it's going to be opened right up, you know, on, on the west side of this, of this property. So, those are a few comments, I, you know, at this point, I think there's just, you're trying to do too much on this, this piece, this parcel of land. Thank you.
Anyone else with a comment, either in favor or in opposition from the public? This conversation that we would leave this application open, so, hearing that, I would ask.
Would you like a motion for that, Barbara?
I'd like a motion to continue the public hearing to a date specific.
Oh, my God.
May eleventh?
No, twelve, please bear with me, I apologize. I'm supposed to be more prepared than this, but I'm never really. Okay, so we have a special meeting. I don't have my, my work schedule, hang on.
You have a special meeting next week, don't we?
Yeah, next, not next week, I don't think, the following.
Yeah, because we moved it because of the schedules. Did, did you move it back?
Hey, Mark?
It is, if I may, just.
Who's talking, please?
This is Sandy.
Oh, thank you, Sandy.
Our, our next meeting is Monday, next Monday, the twentieth, and then, after that is May eleventh. I don't know if they'd be ready for Monday night.
Well, we could ask the applicant.
I think if it's, if it's possible to leave it open until the twentieth, I think
we can probably work with town staff on some, on most of these other issues and clarifying these things.
Ryan, that's one week.
Yep.
That, you think that's efficient?
Is it, is it possible for me, just because I don't know if I'm going to be able to work with the developer on kind of coming, getting question, answer to all these questions by that, is it possible to?
What's the first meeting?
Leave it open, and then if we need to table until the eleventh, we could do that?
Well, we can leave it to be held to May eleventh, if that makes you feel more secure that you can accomplish it.
I'm sure we can, I just, my only concern is I don't want to make the developer wait another month, if it, if, if we can consolidate these issues and can get everything squared away by the end of this week.
Well, if you, if you wanted to go to the twentieth, which is next week, and you weren't able to accomplish it on the twentieth, then you could ask for it to be left open until you could, so.
Correct, so I would like to.
That's something, are you, are you comfortable with us doing that?
Yeah, that would be great, thank you very much.
Does everybody understand what we're talking about? That we would be keeping this open until April twentieth, and he would, if he were not able to complete it by that date, he could ask for it to be kept open again. Does everybody understand that?
Yes.
Yes.
So, we'll go back. So go back to, was it Matt making the motion?
Yes.
So you're going to, we're going to keep it open until, continue it until April 20th, which is next Monday?
Okay. I move to continue this meeting and keep this meeting open until April 20th, which is next week.
Right. Is there a second? Yes.
Yes. Who is replacing Patrick?
Who is? We didn't do that, did we? It would have to be. Do you know who's in, Sandy, do you know who's in line?
I believe it's Sandy. I believe Keith Weber is in line to vote next.
Barbara, I'd rather Pat on this one. I'm, I don't feel, I'm not really close to.
Well, you live on Copper Mine.
I live on Copper Mine, I don't think it would be appropriate.
Then it would be John.
Let's go to John Weber then. So John, you would be sitting in place of Pat. In place of Patrick. All right?
Yes.
Do you have comments or questions?
No, my, my only comment is a procedural one, and that is when we have a meeting on the 20th, do I remain in place of Patrick?
Just for this application.
Just for tonight? Or he has to be reappointed next week?
For this application.
Oh, for this application. So even if this were to remain open for three weeks, you would still be the sitting alternate because Patrick wouldn't be able to sit on it anyway.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So there is a motion? Is there, is there, was there a second on that? I don't think there was.
Mike, a second.
All right, Mike, thank you. So does everybody understand? We're keeping this open until the 20th, which is next week. There's a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. We'll see you next week.
Thank you all for your time. Take care.
Okay, the next public hearing. Tracy Smith, application for special permit for expansion of home in excess of 2,400 square feet at 61 Bird's Eye Road in R20 zone.
Tracy, are you there?
I am.
Wasn't there somebody else too?
Tony, the builder.
Yeah, I'm here.
So if you can start out, please, by explaining your application to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission?
We're just applying to put an extra 300 square feet onto our existing bedroom on the top, on the second floor, over the garage.
Okay, so over the garage here?
Yes. Yep. And the drawings do show the sunroom in the back and we're not doing that anymore. I think. That would be the street view.
And this takes, this takes, this is Mark Duvault. I can just sort of pipe in. This takes Tracy just over the allotment for the expanded home provision and is definitely in line with what you've been approving.
Commissioners, do you have questions of the applicant?
This is Matthew Pogson, and I think it looks appropriate for the building and looks like it fits in well. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, let's make it clear, this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone who has signed in that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this application, may do so at this time.
By raising your hand.
Oh. Was there anybody?
I'm not seeing any hands raised. And. There was one person who said they might be interested, but I don't know, I don't have their phone number and I don't have anyone here that I don't recognize. Okay. So I'm going to say that there's no takers.
Okay, given that, there's nobody in the audience, does the applicant have anything else they would like to say?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Hearing none, I will close this public hearing. Moving on to the next public hearing.
Do you want to take the vote or do you?
Oh, we, we could take the vote now, couldn't we? Yes.
This is Matthew Pogson, and I would like to make a motion to accept the application as presented.
May I have a second?
Mike, a second.
Is there conversation? Does anybody have any questions or comments?
No, it looks good.
Everyone knows, everyone knows what we're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion is carried. Thank you. We'll go on to the next public hearing, which is Educational Play Care Limited, application for a special permit for the expansion of specials permit daycare use at 360 Colt Highway in a B1 zone. Who's the applicant on that?
Harry Freeman.
Harry Freeman.
Trying to unmute you.
I think we've done it.
There we go.
There we go.
Delay.
Thank you, Harry, for being patient.
Feels like it's been a while since I've talked to this group, but again, it's Harry Freeman, Director of Development for Educational Play Care. Thanks for putting this together. And what I'm here for for you today is Educational Play Care has been operating a high-quality daycare facility in the town of Farmington for many years. We're currently operating in approximately a 12,000-square-foot building on 360 Colt Highway. And what we're looking to do because of the expanded interest in daycare is to actually move, expand into the first floor of what's labeled as Building 2 on the map that you have before you. That's approximately 3,000 square feet on the first floor. Usable space is about 2,500 square feet. What we'd be doing in is constructing five classrooms. Some will be used for, just for gross motor skills. So when we relocate some of the classes, some of the children from Building 1 into Building 2, we'll be adding approximately 38 new daycare slots for the, for the town. As we, as I stated before, there's currently an ophthalmologist who's located in that space and they will be relocating from that facility. The upstairs of that space, it's a two-story building in Building 2 as well as Building 1, will be, continue to be used for office purposes. What we're also going to be doing as part of this project is really just enhancing and modernizing the playground facilities. The floor plate or the, the size of the playgrounds will primarily stay the same. We will be actually shrinking it a little bit when we do the enhancements. If you could show the map with the K-Play on there?
Yes, I can. That's what I'm talking about?
Yep, exactly. Where he had his hand before, the, the fence line used to go up to the first jut out in the second building, if you could see that there. We've actually going to move the fence line back about 10 feet just to give a little more green space so we could get some creativity in there in terms of some plantings and things like that, just to further enhance the landscaping in the area. As I said, we will be dividing internally some of the playgrounds to make them more functional, comply with state standards. And that's really it. It's, it's just an expansion and a improvement over the facilities that we currently have in town. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that people may have.
Hi, this is Inez St. James. Are you increasing parking spaces or will that be the same?
Parking spaces will be the same. The former doctor's office will no longer be operating, so there's a negligible impact on the parking demand. We have more than sufficient parking as it is currently.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Anyone else with questions of the applicant? Hearing none. Let it be known that this is a public hearing. If there's anyone who has signed in who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application, you may do so now.
I don't think anyone is. Nobody's raising their hands, Chairman?
No. Hearing none, would the applicant like to add anything?
The only thing that I've had, would like to add, to go publicly on the record, is that I've been in this business for a long time, was in the, on the public sector side for a long time. I've interacted with a lot of different planning departments and the interactions that I've had with both of the individuals, Sandy, Mark, has, has really been a pleasure. They've really bent over backwards to be of assistance to the business, businesses that are expanding in town and it's, it's much appreciated from the applicant's side.
We're glad to keep you. Thank you for the compliment.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Harry.
Hearing no other comments, I will close this public hearing. Now we can go to a vote on Educational Play Care LGD.
I move to approve the, oh, Matthew Pogson, and I move to approve the application as presented.
May I have a second, please?
That was Mike Rabulis.
Was that Mike again? Did I lose you, Mike?
No, I'm here. That was my second.
Okay. Okay. So there is a motion and a second on Educational Play Care. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Absayed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Do we have a, do we have a planner's report?
Oh, I don't think I had anything more for you. Just a couple of comments that were, were there regarding the times being what they are. I, I think that's it. I mean, we're doing the best we can with what we've got. Just to let everyone know, we're running on split shifts. So one week it's Bruce Seer and myself. Somebody's got to keep me sane. The other week it's Shannon Rutherford and Sandy Machad. Sandy actually keeps me insane at home when I'm working at home because I can't find anything. I can't find anything in my own desk. So it's going pretty well, all things considered, and some, some days are still better than others, and I'm sure we're all experiencing that. I hope that everyone's doing okay as far as any business is concerned. You can see by your, your agenda that we've got a few things coming your way. Couple of them are just reapprovals, à la, was it 19 Perry Street? Perry Street? Yeah. So they're really, I don't want to say they're no brainers, but they're, they're pretty much no brainers. I haven't gotten into the Michael Quas application quite as yet, but I will be. And so we'll be getting you some, some more information on your meeting of May 11th. Sandy, I'm just so curious, the, the meeting that we have is, it's moved, it's moved on me. I understand that it couldn't be on a two, the following Monday, but it's actually this coming Monday?
Yeah. It was changed because we were supposed to have a town meeting.
Right.
And then the town meeting got changed after the fact.
I thought it was on a Wednesday and I, and I'm just, I can't pull up anything on my calendar right now, so quite the conundrum. Other than, other than the confusion that you can hear in my voice, everything's still the same.
Could I have a motion? Could I have the motion for the minutes of the March 23rd meeting, please?
Just a quick question, Mike Rabulis. What is the special meeting for next week?
It's a regular planning and zoning meeting.
Right. It was moved, Mike, because of the town meeting, town budget meeting, which is not occurring now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. All right. It's Inez. Thank you very much. It's been awesome. I've been emailing you guys at the town hall for my work purposes and to me, I don't feel like there's an interruption, so you guys are definitely doing an awesome job. I do have a question for you. There was an email you forwarded that came in from a resident about drive-throughs. I responded and I gave you my opinion, but do you need us to respond or you'll tell us if you need a response?
No, you can respond if you liken us, it's okay. Most of the time, the stuff is for your information, but it's, it always serves me well to know what you're thinking. So if you want to let me know, that's a good thing.
I will always let you know. I'm the shy one. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Before I call for adjournment, I would just want to thank all of you.
Well, we got to get the motion.
I thought they just did it. They didn't?
No, this is Matthew Pogson. I move, I move to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
March 23rd is what we're approving.
March 23rd. I, I move to approve the minutes from March 23rd.
The micro bullas seconds it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I just want to make a comment before we close, that I thank you for the patience that you've given us tonight. This is a first for all of us and it's very possible that it's going to go on this way for a while. And it, it's a little distracting at times for all of us. I, I want to just make a comment, and, and that is that I would like you to feel comfortable because we didn't get a lot of comments from members of the commission, and I would like to hear more, even though I know this is all new. If you feel like you need some expertise development on Zoom, let us know because there are ways that we can help you. I need expertise, so, you know, I, it's all new to all of us. I feel we did a good job for our town and I want to.